Street and Hunt Club Road consisting of 6498, 16962, and 16944 West Washington Street to C2 Community Commercial. The property is currently zoned R1, Single Family Residential in the Village of Gurnee, and E Estate in unincorporated Lake County. The subject property is surrounded by R5 PUD, Multi Family Residential as a PUD to the north, C2 Community Commercial District to the south and west, and E Estate in unincorporated Lake County to the east. The existing comprehensive land use plan shows office service for the subject property, and the draft comprehensive land use plan shows commercial. In addition, a special use permit is requested to allow the establishment and operation of a car wash. As with all zoning map amendment and special use permit petitions, the planning and zoning board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the village board for their determination. The petitioner and his representatives are in attendance to present their plans and answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you Clara. As this is a public hearing, I would request anybody from the petitioner or members of the general public who intend to give testimony or ask questions to at least stand and be sworn in by the village attorney.
So if anyone else has any comments or think you want to reserve that right, please stand at this time and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. You may be seated.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner and I ask that you use the microphone, please.
Any preference on where I should stand?
Anywhere you're comfortable. The key thing is just to use the microphone.
Okay. Is it on? Check, check, check. Okay. Well, thank you everyone for, you know, letting us present this development to you. First and foremost, before I get started, I really, you probably hear this all the time, but I feel like it's, it needs to be said. I need to tip my hat to your Economic Development Department. They are incredible. I mean, I can't say enough about them. Every single person that I've been in contact with has been phenomenal, very organized, just, it's how it should be, but seldom is. So, you know, everyone is doing a phenomenal job that I've, that I've met with. So, you know, I certainly appreciate that, and they're doing, they're doing a great job representing everybody in the village, so. With that, let's get started. Where am I supposed to?
Can you get closer? Maybe getting closer?
I might need to relocate.
I don't know. It was working a second ago.
I broke it already, soft and...
Left and right?
Pointer works.
Alright, let's vote.
Right. Try it one more time. It was just, okay.
Okay. Cool. Now it's working. Alright. Alright. Off to a good start. So, thank you again. So, goals for the meeting, you know, just to have everyone get to know us, because you don't really know us at all right now. And then our vision for the, for the property, for our development, and then any questions. If there are any questions, as I'm going, feel free to just jump in. This doesn't need to be a wait till the end, I don't want anyone to forget it or what have you, just, you know, don't, don't, don't be bashful, just jump right in. So, a little bit about us. First and foremost, we're a family-owned operated company. We have four owners. With me today is one of them, Russ, he's my father-in-law. The other owners are his brother and then his brother's son-in-law. We make a, what we believe is a really good pairing between all four of us. Also with me today is Brennan, he's from Chloa, who did the traffic management study, in case anyone has any questions pertaining to the traffic. So, a little bit about our dynamic, and really where we feel that we're set up for a, to be the best that we can be, is we have first and foremost thirty-five years of experience in the industry. How it got started was my father-in-law got into the business thirty-five years ago, actually him and his brother did, and then about seven years ago, myself, and then Dwayne, who is his brother's son-in-law, also joined. So, all of us pictured right here, this is in front of our Round Lake Beach development. There's Russ, that's myself, that's Dwayne, and then Israel. So, the dynamic between the four of us is really, Russ and I are the front, front end of things, we're the, we're the business side, where we run the place, we're HR, we do the financials, we come up with the policies and procedures, we operate it in a day-to-day, big picture, small picture, as far as operating the business. Now, the other two, Israel and Dwayne, they're kind of like the mad scientists of it. So, they've got a very, I guess, simple job that's really hard actually, is, hey guys, we need to take a dirty car and make it perfect. Go, and have at it. So, they do all the equipment installation themselves, all the maintenance and repair, and we really think that that is great for us and gives us a competitive advantage over everyone else, because when something breaks, it's usually on a busy Saturday, and instead of being shut down until Monday, it's a phone call away, we're fixing it within thirty minutes, and we're back up and running, which is wonderful. But also, we do all of our own repairs, maintenance, weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly maintenance. And, you know, together, we believe we make a, a great, great partnership. So, currently, we own and operate nine locations, five in Chicago, one in Round Lake, one in Oaklawn, one in Hoffman Estates, and one in Round Lake Beach. Hopefully, number ten coming to a town near you. We pride ourselves on putting the customer first in every single aspect of the business, and moreover, our goal is to be the best in this industry. We don't want to be number two, we don't want to be just good, we're gunning straight for being number one. So, but when Russ and I, and we're, we're coming together and we're thinking of, of business development, every single decision we make is based on the customer, every single one of them, whether it's the building, whether it's the functionality, the flow, the amount of employees that we hire, the, every single thing, our first question is, is this best thing for the customer? And once we have that as a yes, then we move on. Corporate philosophy, this is kind of an interesting take, we think, on what we're really trying to accomplish. So, we want to provide our customers with an everyday affordable luxury, because when you get down to it, the car wash industry, it's a luxury purchase. You don't need to wash your car. You want to, you feel better when you do. It's not going to run any better, like you get an oil change or a brake job, but when you wash it, you have an extra pep in your step. You feel a little bit better about yourself. It's like putting on a new outfit for the first time, you feel like you could set the world on fire. And understanding that this is a luxury purchase, we want to be able to afford that to everybody, and everyone to be able to have that. And actually, this is the same exact thing that Starbucks did, believe it or not, and this is how they got so popular, was for three dollars, four dollars, five dollars, whatever you want to do, you could treat yourself and pamper yourself in a day, very easily, for three bucks for a coffee, four bucks, whatever your, your choice is, but it allowed you to feel better, to give you some status or whatever you want, for a pretty affordable amount of money. And that's what we're trying to do, whether your, your affordability level is a three-dollar price point. Come in, feel good about yourself, six dollar, ten dollar, thirteen dollar, whatever is affordable to you, come in and feel good about yourself. And so, that's our corporate philosophy, to provide our customers with an ever, everyday affordable luxury. So, request for special, special use, as Clara had mentioned, currently unincorporated, seeking to be to C2 zoning. We do believe that this particular location is a phenomenal spot for everybody, for the village, for the customers, for the residents, and we'll get more into that in a little bit, but really, we want it to be good for everybody. For, for the, the village to be proud of what we have to bring, the local residents, the commuters, everyone in the area, we want to really be a part and, and be proud of what we have to bring. So, here's a rendering of the building, and I'll, I'll talk a good amount about this building in particular, but the first thing that really comes to mind is, when Russ and I designed this, we didn't want it to look like a car wash. We want it to look like a top-notch, elegant, classy building. And hey, eventually, we want you to figure out that it's a car wash, but we want you to look at it, and, and we want people to be attracted to it. We want it to be classy, elegant, top-class. That's what we do, that's what we operate, and this is how we want to become the best and be the best, is by building buildings like this. So, this is the, the elevation views, north, south, east, west. We'll talk a little bit more about the composition of the materials and what have you in a little bit, but... So, Papo's Express, the, our, our development here. Quality and value is what we strive for. So, as we already talked about with the building, we want it to be state-of-the-art. We want it to be modern, but we want it to be classy, one-of-a-kind, top-notch, and within it, we also have what I call wow factors. Wow factors, we build our business around, and it's very simple what a wow factor is, it's, you experience something, no matter how big or how small, and you think to yourself, wow. And then you got to go around and tell somebody, whether it's a husband, a wife, a friend, a mom, a dad, or something, you gravitate towards this, and once you experience it, you have to let somebody know, you won't believe what I just saw. And I'll talk about a little bit more of the wow factors that we have, we've got many of them that we, that we build in to our developments, but that's going to make a customer come back. But then also, the number-one way of marketing is word of mouth. So, our goal is to make the village proud, the local residents proud, the commuters proud. If, if it's not a win-win for everyone, we're failing. And when coming up with this development, we've really tried to consider everybody. We want it to be good for everybody. So, wow factors. This is from our Round Lake Beach development. It opened about two years ago, and one thing that we are very adamant about, the picture on the left is the entrance, clean, 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 clean. That is something that we, we pride ourselves on. Every single night, we do a deep clean power wash of everything. That's generally not done in the industry, many people only do it once a week, sometimes they do it once every three or four days. We're adamant about doing it every single day, because, you know what, we want to be the best. We want everyone to have a great experience, and you can't have that in a dirty car wash or a dirty restroom or a dirty restaurant. We're very, very adamant that everything's got to be clean, just like the first day we open. We have lots of natural light coming in, we epoxy the floor, we don't leave it raw concrete, you know, white walls are, are so pleasant when they're clean. On the right-hand side, that's the exit. Now, we don't go crazy, we don't have a carnival ride with the lights that we use, but we do use splashes of color, because, you know what, it's, it's very attractive, it sets an ambiance. Also, it's, you know, the kids love them. You, you want to target towards the kids as well, because, you know what, they, they love coming through these things too. More wow factors, our lava, our hot wax. It's, it's very important to us that, you know, certain colors pop. Again, we're not going for carnival ride, more important is that it's classy, elegant, but it's very important. People love all the soap from the lava, they love all the hot wax from the application that we have. If you do it right, it is very, very, very impressive, and that's something we pride ourselves on. This is a fun story, and this really gets to the heart of what we're about, and when we opened Round Lake Beach, we submitted our landscape plan. It was accepted, we planted it, we got our occupancy permit, everything was good. Well, Russ and I sat there, and, you know, we're, we're excited. We're open, things were going good, and then we were looking around, and we just looked at each other and we said, this isn't it. There's not enough color, there's not enough plants, there's not enough, you know, we need more. We went back, and actually, at this location, we put in eleven hundred more annual flowers. And when the village saw that and, and came out and, because we told them we were going to do it, we said, we need more. Their first question was, you know you got to plant those every year, right? Yes, 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 yes. We, we know the difference between annuals and perennials, but, say, that, that goes to show what we do, the standards we set for ourselves, and what we want our customers to experience. Now, let me ask you, when was the last time, whether it's a doctor's office, a bank, a, a strip mall development, a law office, when did anyone ever do a landscape plan, everyone accepts it, and then they come back to you and say, we need to add more plants, we need to do more flowers? I don't know if that's, I haven't heard of it happening yet, but I, that's what we did, and that's what we, that's what we strive for, is it doesn't, we, we're not cutting corners, we want to be the best, we want it to be, you know, pleasant for everyone. And so, you don't know how many compliments we've gotten from the flowers, the wow factors of that, where they come in and, and they see what we're planting in spring and in summer, how much they, they grow and bloom, and we get compliments all the time, that's what's important to us, that's our wow factors, that's what we're trying to accomplish. And by the way, did I mention that every part of our business is designed to impress the customer? This is our bathroom, over at a car wash in Round Lake Beach. Now, I mean, you go to a nice restaurant, they've got nice bathrooms. I would put our bathroom in Round Lake Beach up to any bathroom you've been to, please go and see it, if, if you're in the area, go and look at it, but it's, we don't cut corners. This is our wow factors, this is what I'm talking about. When you use a bathroom like this in a car wash, you're going to leave, and you're going to probably talk to one of our employees and say, that thing's incredible. And then I hope you get in your car, and then you call a spouse or a friend, and, and you're going to say, you wouldn't believe the bathroom, you would never guess where it'd be. So, that's important. That's the wow factors that I'm talking about, that we, that we do in not cutting corners and want to impress, impress everybody every time they see our business. But equally as important to impressing the customer, we do this for the employees too, because if you're telling the employees, we're the best, we want to be the best, but then you stick them in a bathroom with white walls, concrete floor, and a little dim light bulb above and say, yeah, we're the best, go, have at it, we're, we're, we're great. Actions speak louder than words, and talk is cheap, so we always try to back it up to our employees. Fully embrace, when you give them these kind of amenities and facilities to use, they champion what we have, what, what we believe in, what we preach, what we show. That's just as important to us as doing right by the customer, it's doing right by the employees so that they believe in what we're trying to do. So, company never settle, always get better. Every day, we're trying to get better, every day, every development we do, we're trying to one-up ourselves, we're trying to move on to the next level. On the left, Round Lake Beach, that's the one we just did two years ago, we love it, we absolutely love that design, but when we're coming out with Gurnee for, for, for this development, Russ and I sat down, we said, how can we do better? We came up with two prototypes, for as soon as it was shot down, there was not enough brick and, and stone, that's okay, we had two, so we had another one, ready to go, that is majority brick and stone. But, again, the mentality is, we always want to try to do better, and our goal is that when you look at our building, you don't think car wash, you think, that is a great-looking building, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, that's what we want to do, and again, hopefully, people eventually figure out it's a car wash, otherwise, it's not going to do very well, but we're always trying to move forward. We're going to, we're going to move to a new theme too, we used blue over in Round Lake Beach, we're going to move to a black theme here, is, we think it's classier, we think it's more elegant, we think it's more clean. As I said, every single thing, we look at and see if we can do better as we continue to move and grow. Building materials. So, we've got thirty percent brick, twenty-one percent stone, just over fifty-one percent of those materials. Glass is our third most used, about eighteen percent. ACM, that's an aluminum composite paneling, this is the same stuff that they use for BMW, Porsche, Mercedes dealerships, it's very high-end, we love that, and it's actually a common theme that we have between all of our locations, kind of the, the uniting material around the Papo's Express, imaging on the building. The next is the cornice, it's the, the caps on top of the, the building, and then we have the decor grill, which is, these last two are very small amounts, but when we were looking at these east and west profiles, it, we thought there was something missing, there's an extra accent that should have been added, so this grill is actually right above here, above the mandor, just, we thought it was a little, little bear, so we had a little extra accent there. Thousand square feet. Landscape plan. Landscape, lots of landscapes. So, in the front, we have, this is the south side, six trees, shade trees, three ornamental trees, eighty-six large shrubs. On the corner, this is the west side, this is four shade trees, three ornamental trees, forty-seven large shrubs. The rear landscape, which is the north side, facing Tom's Place, sixteen evergreens, six shade trees, ninety-one large shrubs, and eight-foot stone image fence. I'm going to backtrack for a quick second, where the stone image fence is actually right here. We think it is a very, very, very attractive, nothing wrong with wood, nothing wrong with the, the white vinyl, vinyl fencing. We absolutely love this, we think it's very classy, we think it's top-notch, and offers great sound and light protection as well. So, that's the eight-foot image fence that I'm referring to in these yard landscapes. And then the final one, the east side, twelve evergreen, five shade trees, fifty-seven large shrub, eight, the same eight-foot stone image fence. And then the internal parking lot, three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine square feet of ground cover. These are all to Perk Code, we're not asking for any variance, this is, this is what the regulations were, and we're happy to do them, we think they'll look great. And I'm sure we will find a way to put some annuals in, we just don't know where they would go, but they'll, they'll look nice. So, as far as the, the site plan and functionality, here's how the site's going to flow, I apologize, it looks kind of hard to see. We got our driveway here off Hunt Club, and then we got our Washington driveway here. So, if we have customers coming in off Washington, this is the exit of the wash, this is the entrance of the wash, they will come in here, and then they'll have the opportunity to either go to the vacuum spaces, we have twenty-eight vacuums, and then after vacuuming, they could come back out here, or they could go through to here and then get into the stacking to enter the car wash. Now, if you come in off Hunt Club, you'll come in here, you could come straight into the stacking lanes, or you can go ahead and go straight, come into the vacuum area, and then come back out and go to the, the pay stations to enter the car wash. You have full access, entrance and exit off of both, right in, right out. Twenty-eight vacuum spots, like I said, seven onsite directional signs to help guide people this way to the vacuums, this way to Hunt Club, this way to Washington, this way to wash entrance. It's a very quick learning curve at, at, at these sites, so once they're there one time, they'll have it down pat. And I think the functionality is pretty simple, it's not too difficult to navigate. We've got eight employee parking spots right here, we have a total of forty-five queuing spaces for car washes waiting to get in the car, the cars to get into the car wash. We have seven in front of each pay station here, for a total of twenty-one, and you could fit twenty-one here, coming in from Washington before getting into the, into the, the lanes for the pay stations. We have an additional three right here before you get into the car wash, for a total of forty-five queuing spaces. Very important to us, I mentioned it earlier, I want this to be a win-win-win for everybody. Very, very important to us is that the neighbors enjoy this development, that they don't believe we're going to be a nuisance, it's extremely important to us. A lot of our landscape is placed to help them, our, our fence that we're using, and the building in particular. So, very important to us that everyone's going to, that is proud of this development. So, from Thomas Place, this is what they're going to be seeing from their parking lot, this is, this is their view. You're going to be seeing this fence, stone image fence, we have a total of sixteen evergreens, six shade trees, so twenty-two trees along that perimeter for them, and then all that you're going to be able to see is this much of the building. Again, when you look at that building, do you see car wash? I don't, I think that that's just a, a good-looking building, and so, that's very important to us, that it's aesthetically pleasing for the neighbors in the area. Now, as far as the neighbor to the east, we've got twelve evergreen trees, five shade trees, and again, that's stone image fenced, eight feet high, and again, you look at the, at the building, I see brick, I see stone, I see a black claw, which we, we have at all of our developments, and again, we think that's a very elegant look. Lighting, photometric plan, applies to the village's standards, basically, our lights are going to stay on our properties, they're not going to be shining into anyone's backyards, again, very important, we don't want to be disturbing anyone. Less than a one candlelight rating on the perimeter, closer to zero, but yeah, our, our lights are, are staying on our property, not going anywhere else. Sound testing, obviously, very important, extremely important. Our testing was done by acoustic associates, Dr. Tom Thunder, I believe he's done work for the village, I think he was telling me Great America or something like that, but very good at what he does, very, very smart man, very in-depth. So, from page three, paragraph one, this is what he says, if the level is limited to no more than five decibels above ambient noise, then the noise would pose no impact. So, that's the goal, that's the goal. We don't want any noise impact for the residents because of us. So, current decibel conditions. Ambient levels right now on our property is, in the six o'clock hour, fifty-nine decibels, in the seven o'clock hour, fifty-seven decibels, in the eight o'clock hour, fifty-six decibels. So, our car wash operation at the parking lot of Thomas Place will be fifty-four decibels. That's less than what ambient noise is right there. So, I think that's pretty good. Again, goals five, we're one under. The residents of the east, from our car wash operations, it's fifty-nine decibels, this is three decibels above the lowest average hourly reading from eight to nine. From eight to nine, their average is fifty-six, we're fifty-nine, three above, we're well under the five, the goal that Dr. Tom Thunder had said would pose no impact. And with these findings based on Dr. Tom Thunder's study, the car wash would meet the village's noise regulations in article ten dot one dot, or ten dot four dot one, most important part. Traffic. As far as traffic goes, as I said, Brennan is here to answer any questions that may regard to that, but I would go ahead and direct you to conclusions from the study on page twenty-two. The proposed, the proposed car wash will not generate a significant amount of traffic, which will be reduced due to pass-by traffic. The intersection of Washington and Hunt Club Road will continue to operate acceptable, acceptable level service under future conditions. The proposed access drives will be adequate in accommodating the traffic projected to be generated by the proposed facility. Widening of Washington Street or Hunt Club Road to provide right-turn lanes at either driveway will not be warranted. And then the site plan provides efficient circulation and adequate stacking. Those are his findings, page twenty-two of the traffic impact study. With that, I appreciate everybody's time, getting to know who we are, what we want to bring to your lovely town of Gurnee here. We think it'll be great pairing. If anyone has any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to hear and listen and maybe offer some assurances if there are any, any concerns. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. First, I just want to clarify with staff, I mean, I think Clara said it originally, but the upcoming comprehensive plan envisions that commercial is an appropriate use for this particular corner, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And my read of the materials is, the only issue that we're really dealing with is special use permit, they're not asking for anything in terms of lighting, parking, signage?
Special use and reason.
Okay. Alright. Any, anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, Tim?
So, my question would be, we, we've all been to similar types of car washes, recognizing that yours is purportedly the best.
Yes, Tim?
So, my question would be, we've all been to similar types of car washes, recognizing that yours is purportedly the best. So, I think that when I am at a car wash, one of these things that I noticed with, I think you said twenty-eight different vacuums, plus you have the vacuums that are going to be driving, or going to be drying off the cars at the exit, the car wash, where and what is your proof of concept that there will only be five decibels? It seems, I hear these vacuums going, they, even if you put them back, they sometimes run when you're in a car wash, and I worry about the neighbor to the east hearing all of this noise. Where did you come up, and how did you verify this five decibel, that it's not going to be an issue? Help me understand, other than what I read and what I heard you say.
That was, so we had given, first and foremost, I appreciate the question. So, they came out with a new blower system, International Drying Corporation out of Crystal Lake. We saw this over at the international car wash show, and we're completely blown away by it. You're right, a lot of the vacuums and the blowers at the end are, can be very noisy. They came out with something called the Stealth Dryer. And literally, at the auto show, we had a conversation underneath it at full blast. It is absolutely incredible that the technology that they have come out with, and California has the strictest noise standards out there. So there's a huge need for a very quiet drying system. And they nailed it. It's absolutely phenomenal, it's incredible. How quiet it is, that you can actually have a conversation underneath it while it's at full blast. But the five decibels, to answer that portion of it, was, we took all of those statistics and decibels and readings from that dryer system, and gave it to Dr. Tom Thunder, for him to evaluate and put in his plans, and then he came out and did his, it's, I don't have a picture of it, it's in his report, but he said, okay, the blowers are located here, here's all the noise generating stuff, equipment. At this point, and something that he was adamant about, was that we needed to have a sound dampening fence, which our stone image fence is, and I know there were some questions about that, that you had sent me, I brought the letters with, in case they didn't get circulated, saying that our fence does qualify as that, it exceeds the criteria to be a sound dampening fence. And then he also said, to be able to keep this less than five decibels, because that was, that's his words on page, I think it was page three, paragraph one is where it was, I cited it when we were going through the, I was going through the, so these were his words, and I took this right from his report, page three, paragraph one, "If the level is limited to no more than five decibels above ambient noise, then the noise will not pose an impact." And so, based on the information from the dryers that we will be using, and the distance, and everything we've done to keep that noise on our site, that's where he said, off of our property to the east, it will be three decibels above ambient, and off of our property to north, it will be less than one decibel is the noise generated from our car wash.
Are those, the machinery that you're talking about, you saw at the auto show that you're incorporating?
Yes.
Is that for cars exiting the car wash?
Yes.
What about the twenty-eight?
So, as far as how we...
Vacuums, I mean, that is.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, what we do is, we actually put all the, most of that noise is generated by the motors, and the canisters that have the filters and what have you to keep it from clogging up the motors, we put that in our equipment room. So that's behind thick inches of concrete. So those are not outside, they're not in the elements or what have you. And that's what generates most of the noises from the vacuums, is the motors are extremely loud, and those are stuck in our equipment room, behind all the concrete, keeping that within our, you know, building, so the sound's not escaping from that.
So it's a fully enclosed building with walls and ceiling and roof and all that stuff?
Yes, oh yeah, yes.
You need to use the microphone though, please?
And you do have to identify your name.
My name is Russell, I'm Joe's father-in-law. Very good question, I would be concerned of it too. Just to go back a little bit, our buildings are prefab nine, eight to nine inches thick. So, the one at Round Lake Beach has a home, basically, how many feet from our building, the first home on the other side? Twenty feet? Maybe, let's say, yeah. And not one of those neighbors have complained, or have anything to say about our noise factor, including, and you're right, twenty-eight vacuums, you would think they would be very loud. The loudest part is what we have in our building. And it's actually not that loud, because you actually could walk by it, and you don't have to put earmuffs on or anything like that. It's compacted in, the technology allows these motors to be a little bit more quiet, those will never go outside, because then it would generate a little bit more noise. The structure of bringing the vacuum to where you're vacuuming your car is a very quiet factor. When you hang up your vacuum, yes, some people don't, they throw it on the side, that vacuum noise, you can hear fifteen feet away, not even that. So, we experience that now, and in our other locations, the same. These are the most powerful vacuums that they make, but the quieter, the quietest and the highest technology that they make today. Again, everything we do, we try to do it very high-end, to last longer, to do better, and to get that wow factor from the customer when you go. Our vacuums, and I encourage everybody on this board to go visit our location in Round Lake Beach at any given time you like, I think you will be extremely impressed, not only with the way it looks, how we operate it, and the finished touch of the wash. And you're more welcome to sit outside and wait outside, ten feet away, and hear the noise factor. It is an amazing thing. Again, we have a home, a whole bunch of homes, right next to us. And, now one concern, we've been almost open two years now. So, but, good question, this property happens to be a lot larger, which is nice, but there's no concerns at all, we're doing it now, and now our equipment here is even better, because every couple of years, they come up with something better, if you're willing to spend the money. And that's what we're doing at this location. I just wanted to add that, Joe's done a great job, and sometimes little details, and I just wanted to bring that out to you. But our main goal is, if all twenty-eight vacuums are working, you can go there, you can have a conversation between each person next to each other, won't even have an issue at all. So, that's what we do, but you're more welcome to visit our location than we do it now, so you can see, also, I would love that, so you guys could see how high-end we operate our business. We're family-owned, we control every aspect of it, we have one of the best customer service in this car wash business. We're not the same. We're as if Starbucks got into the car wash business, how good they would want it, that's how we are, and I think we're better than that. And that's my honest opinion. You're more than welcome in the city of Chicago, anywhere you want, get ahold of Joe, we'll give you a location, you can visit our locations, how we are, how we do things. And we're always that way, we're always improving our business format, especially, you could talk to Round Lake Beach, they're very proud of us, how we do our business, how we consult ourselves, how we do. So, I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Tim, anything else?
Thank you.
Edwin?
I have a question. The traffic study, I noticed that they were planning on doing some improvements to the intersection of Hunt Club and Washington. Is that traffic study done with that figured in? With the improvements figured in, or?
Brennan will answer that, but I believe a lot of that, the intersection of Washington and Hunt Club will continue to operate at acceptable levels under future conditions. I think that's what Louis was referring to, but...
When you say "future" conditions, is that with the improvements?
Hello, my name is Brennan May, traffic engineering consultant with KLOA. So these findings are the existing intersection geometry with the projected traffic volumes, which do take into account an ambient growth factor on top of the car wash. So with the improvements, we did run that after the traffic study was issued, and the capacity analysis showed that the intersection would operate better than existing on the weekday.
Yeah, because one of the issues I see with the exit onto Washington is that's always backed up. In fact, even on the way over here, which was not during rush hour, it was backed up where your driveway would be. So I can see issues with people getting out of the car wash onto Washington Street.
Yep.
Edwin, there was a public forum, like a month or so ago, that Lake County put out to get feedback on the proposed intersection, and when I first saw it, I didn't see an obvious new lane for a right turn from westbound Washington to northbound Hunt Club.
Okay.
And the response came back that there will be one.
Okay.
So there's going to be an extra lane there.
And will that be done before the car wash is put in?
No, I don't think so.
Aren't they going to cut into their piece of property then, that they're trying to develop?
They're dedicating...
You're aware of that?
That was taken into... They're dedicating thirty feet of right-of-way from both frontages.
Okay. All right.
So is there going to be, what I don't recall, is there going to be an extra lane on Hunt Club too?
This is thirty feet of right-of-way.
There'll still be two through...
Okay. So one additional turn lane going from Washington to Hunt Club.
One additional turn lane going from westbound to Washington.
A dedicated right-hand turn lane.
Or the westbound to southbound.
Okay. And Lake County is giving favorable feedback in terms of how this potential development would work with the improved conditions.
Yes, with the right-in, right-outs, they had no issues with both curators.
Okay. And I'm assuming they wouldn't allow anything but right-in, right-out, correct? Okay. Brian?
Just a couple things. So, in your testimony, I'm going to talk about the fences now, in your testimony indicated the fence on the north was going to be eight feet, but in your application and on your site plan, it indicates that the fence is actually six feet, so...
That what, then accidentally...
Yeah, and the portion to the north, it shows six foot, but the one to the east shows eight foot.
Okay. That, then I may have messed up and printed off the wrong site plan. The most up-to-date one has that being eight feet all the way around. Now, Dr. Tom Thunder did not say that the one to the north had to be six, or eight feet, that it was okay at six, but we wanted it to be a uniform look, that is going to be eight feet, and I apologize about that oversight.
Okay. And then, keeping with the fences, you showed a couple renderings of what the fences were going to look like?
Yes.
And your landscape plan, it appears that, there appears to be some sort of landscaping on the outside of the fence, so is that accurate? That's what this is showing here.
What patient number are you in?
Oh, I think that's just labeling, that's labeling the tree leaves, those are letters, and it's actually pointing to trees on the side here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they identified existing trees that would be, that we could, that will stay...
So all the landscaping around the fences are all going to be on the inside of your lot?
Correct.
So people will just be looking at this eight-foot fence, okay.
Right. Well, there are a good amount of trees that are on the other side that weren't put into the renderings, but I was just looking at, from our side.
And then, lastly, your hours in your application, it says seven AM to nine PM, but it could vary depending on weather and holidays, can you expand a little bit more on...
So generally, it's going to be seven to nine, or seven AM to nine PM. If it's raining all day, we'll use that as a maintenance and cleaning day. So if it's pouring outside, we will close. If it's, say, Christmas, we usually close. If it's, you know, Thanksgiving, we'll do like a half-day, so our standard hours are seven AM to nine PM. Weather pending, again, if it's snowstorm, we're not going to stay open, that's just, you know, no one's going to get a car wash, or if it's certain holidays, we may take half-days, or, but I always post any hour changes on the website, and so I direct any customers to the website if it's questionable to, before they come out.
And are those hours consistent with your other facilities?
Yes.
Okay. And do you ever expand the hours?
No, no. Actually, so our automated, our system, when we, we program when they automatically turn on and off. So at nine o'clock, they go off without any intervention. They automatically come up at seven AM. Now, there is a manual override, but by, you know, the only people, to be honest, the only one that has a password to do that is me. I mean, Russ, I'll give it to you, but generally, you know, I'm there in day-to-day operations, and, so we stay very strict within those hours, we don't, there is no nine oh one close, no, no, they, it closes at nine o'clock sharp.
So what happens if someone's in the queue at eight forty-five and hasn't gone through yet, do you tell them to go home?
If they have not paid by nine o'clock, they automatically turn off.
Okay.
So, we haven't run into that issue yet, I mean, that would be a good problem to have, but, you know, for the local residents, I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, I don't want to still be operating, and we want to go to lights at, you know, nighttime mode, and, you know, just the security lights and what have you, so we're very strict with that nine o'clock.
Okay, I like the answer.
Oh, okay. I thought that was a bad experience for you one time, where someone shut it down.
I don't wash my car at nighttime, stuck in the car wash.
Yeah, yeah. The car wash doesn't, the pay stations close, you won't be halfway through with soap on your car, and, no, no, the car wash will finish, but you cannot buy any more car washes come nine PM.
Sometimes you go to a restaurant and says they close at nine, and you get there at eight forty-five.
Oh, no, 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 nine o'clock sharp, pay stations closed down.
Okay. Josh?
I don't have any questions.
Laura?
So there's twenty-one stackable spots, because I'm just concerned people heading north on Hunt Club, would there ever be a chance of backup?
Great question, let me get to, oops, my site plan here. So what we will do in the event, and this was something that we talked about with Brennan and Louis from Chloa, is any event, in the very unlikely event that that happens, what we will do is, we've got, so as I said, we've got twenty-one here, and we've got twenty-one here, and that doesn't even account for any space here. So in the event that we're getting even close, I'd say eighty percent capacity, because the last thing we'll ever want to do is go on to Hunt Club, because then we will be shut down for impeding traffic. So, what we will do is, if the line gets back to here, we will take one of our employees and put them here, and we will direct traffic through the vacuum area and along here, so then we'll be using this area for stacking, this area for stacking, and all along here for stacking. I did not count how many cars we could fit there, but it's going to be well over forty-five if we're doing it in that capacity, and so there, this will never be an issue for impeding traffic on Hunt Washington. Oh, we anticipate that needing to do this may happen two to three times a year. It's just, it's, because of how efficient we are in running the system, and I don't really see it happening, but if it does, we are completely prepared. And at the, we always have at least, at any time where that may be an issue, we've got five people on site. So we would have one person here bringing the cars in, one person at the pay station helping the pay station, one person directing traffic here, one person directing traffic here, and then a floater to help.
Okay. Laura, anything else?
No.
Okay. What is, what is the cycle time? How long, how many cars can you process through in an hour?
To be honest, it's, we could do a lot more. We don't turn it up to full capacity, because we care more about quality than quantity. So our conveyor, if we wanted to, could crank out probably one forty an hour, but we're not going to do that.
So what do you typically run it at?
We will typically, on a busy day, we'll do between ninety and a hundred an hour, which is actually well below industry averages, just because we don't want to cheapen up the wash experience for anybody. We do have a hundred and sixty-five-foot building in this development, which will, you know, help us process cars more efficiently. But, yeah, the last, the worst thing we can do is have people feel like they've been slighted, just because we're busy, and that's not what we do. So we actually, on busy days, go well below industry standards. Quality matters more to us.
Okay. Thank you. Staff, question for staff, is there any concern about, the grade of the properties much lower than Hunt Club and Washington, is there any concern about that? Is there any concern about that? Especially given that it's gonna be a wet environment?
Yeah, so the, the grading of the property has been accounted for with the, the Lake dot widening project and the intersection reconstruction project. It sits a few feet low, but we can still get everything to drain into the detention pond and then out of the site. So no real concerns with the, the site and wetness on the site.
Thank you. All right. As this particular matter is a public hearing, this time I'm gonna open up the floor to the public. Is there anyone from the public that I'd like to ask a question? If so, if you could please use the microphone, stand in the center of the room. And just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bob Shamble. I live two doors away from where this, your proposed project is. And, you know, I, I noticed that, you know, you have your landscaping and you have your fence, you know, you know, built, you know, to kinda cover your property. The people that live at Thomas Place, they live in a three-story building. And I think that their balconies actually, they might have balconies on the south side of the building. So these people are gonna be on their balconies then. And then, this is the view they're gonna have. Right now, you know, I, I, I don't know what their property values are. I don't know if this is gonna diminish, you know, the, the value of their properties having this building going, you know, directly in front of where their property is and, and their, their balconies, for one. The other thing is, um, the neighbor that's directly to my west would be directly to your east. If you put up your landscaping and fence drawing again, it looks like you're right up against their house with, with your landscaping.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify the procedures at first, but please address all your questions to the members of the board. And then, once I've heard all the questions, I'm gonna close the floor to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we'll, we'll circle back.
Well, that's what, that would be my concern. It would be the, you know, the impact on, on the residents of Thomas Place, the impact on the resident that's directly to the east of this property and, and where their, their actual structures are in, in, you know, relation to their home. And then, two, the noise levels. You know, I know the fence is, you know, there to buffer the, the noise levels. And obviously, it'll, it'll do it eight feet up or whatever the, the height of their fences. But like I said, the people that live in Thomas Place, they live in a three-story building. And then you have the, you know, the lighting aspect, the business hours. I gotta think that that's, you know, that's gonna be, you know, of concern of the people that, that live at Thomas Place.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'm gonna close the floor to the public. Did you wanna address the aesthetic issue on the fence?
Thank you for, for sharing your concerns. As I said, I really, and I've said it a few times, because it is that important that we want everyone to, to be proud of this and, and, and like this and participate in this development. So for, as per the comment of the resident to the east, saying that the, the building and development's right on top of it, there's actually a fair amount of space.
This is showing basically their property line.
Our property line is where the fence is. The fence is gonna be right on our, on our property line. And there is a pretty generous amount of space in between where our property line is and where it, where that individual's house is. But then also, our building is, off the top of my head, I don't remember, I think 75 feet onto our property from our, our property line, if I remember correctly. And then also, we've, we've strategically placed the, the trees to try to shelter the building as much as possible. But again, we, we think it's a nice-looking building, you know. We're trying to, to make it look top-notch and elegant and classy and what have you. Now, as far as the lighting comments, now, all of our lights on the perimeter are, are all, actually, all of them are sheltered to not go off of our property. So there will be the, the covers that will keep things from projecting off of our property. So there won't be any light, light shining on anybody on the third, third-level balcony or what have you. As far as the noise and, and the, the eight-foot fence saying, well, the noise will travel over it, the noise is actually, you know, especially the north. The reason why, I mean, it's a very quiet blower system that we've talked about, but also, the noise projection that we have, almost none of it goes north. And that's not to say that a lot of it goes any other direction because there's just not a lot with the new technology that generates noises, especially with it being all enclosed within our building. But the, the, the noise that's generated to the north is extremely limited. And as far as the view goes from anyone who's on a higher balcony and can see over the, the, the fence, the vast majority of, I mean, we, they're gonna be looking at a lot of detention pond and although they're on the third floor, I mean, our, our trees and evergreens have to be so large. So they are gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult to see over the fence, even in, when we open and the, the trees haven't grown that much just because the, the criteria for planting the evergreens in the trees and what have you. Yes.
So I think that's what he's talking about is that they're building, they're walking, they're 75 feet from this property line. Their house to the people to the east is set back substantially further than their building. Their house is very close to that, their west property line.
Very close to their property line.
Yes, and Clara can probably talk about leaving that with those people and talk to them on Friday. And I don't believe that they're here, but they were gonna come if they had any concerns.
They didn't have any concerns, you said?
I said they were going to come if they had any concerns, but they didn't. Didn't seem to have any concerns and were considering coming, but they're not.
And with respect to the sound, they did have an acoustic expert and he actually, so they went out to the site and they measured what the ambient sounds of the traffic. And he's projecting one decibel less than the traffic on the north side. So, they're not, Mr. Thunder's report is not projecting any impact to the, to the north property. And, and I'm not really good at this technical stuff, but as I read the report, the, the fence is kind of an enhancement to the, what will be generated by the, the new system, correct? Then, question for staff. I'm not familiar with the fence material. Do you guys have any experience with that at all?
With the specific fence, no. But with that type of fence, it, as long as, you know, and I've had significant conversations with Dr. Thunder over the years about fencing and using it as a sound barrier. As long as it is, you know, basically not letting light or air through it, it's going to be cutting down that volume of noise. So that's, that's the major criteria. Wanna make sure that there's no holes at the bottom where sound can come under and that it's a solid fence from one end to the other. So with those criteria, it should do as it is proposed to perform.
And it's been a while, but Dr. Thunder's appeared before us before and...
Yes.
My impression is that the village has a good impression of him.
He is our go-to noise consultant.
And if I may, I do have the letter from him that clarified that the fence that we are putting in does meet all the criteria if anyone would like to see that letter.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, have you closed public comment? Can we? Yeah, I did. Okay, I'm sorry. My bad. Yeah. I usually don't, I, I usually don't open the floor again, but I'll, but if, if you can use the microphone. You, you need to, sir, you need to use the microphone in the center.
Okay, I, I understand that, you know, that you, you addressed the questions about the sound level, the fence height and everything else. The other question I asked is the impact on the property values.
Now, as a reminder, Thomas Place is a rental property. So the individual tenants within the, the Thomas Place facility are all renters. The only property value impact would be to the property as a whole, to the landlord. They were noticed and have not expressed any concerns. They're along a commercial, somewhat commercial corridor along Hunt Club Road. This site has always been noted as a office service or as a commercial use. So the development is consistent with what it was when Thomas Place was installed several years ago. So it's, this property doesn't want to be single-family residential. It's always been expected that it would be redeveloped at a higher and better use.
From my perspective, it's one of the busiest intersections in town. So, can I? Yeah, go ahead, Tim. Yeah, I was just gonna add, and it's one of the reasons why I asked if it was closed. I mean, I wanted to give some observations and some thought to what I've heard tonight. I came in really on the fence, because I am concerned because one of our approval standards for special use permit is to make sure the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed special use will not endanger the public health, safety and welfare. And there was excellent presentation because I think that most of the, really, everything was addressed from the sound qual, or the sound landscaping and everything. The gentleman that spoke didn't talk about, for public comment, didn't talk about impact to him or his, his property personally. I was waiting for somebody to get up and talk about their personal impact. I didn't hear that. What I heard was something about his concern for Thomas Place or for the neighbor, neither of one who showed up tonight. So I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here now thinking, you know, the public health, safety and welfare is, is not a concern. And it's kind of swayed me into looking at supporting this tonight. So I just wanted to give, that is my observations from this public hearing. Okay, thank you. I, I have one more question. Did Bill review this at all?
He did the interior site plan and then also reviewed the KLAO report.
And I assume if he had issues, would see some sort of report.
We, Bill actually helped redesign the initial site plan to what it looks like today. Made, you know, several of his, they implemented many of his recommendations from that original evaluation.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. Josh?
I'll just share my, my general thoughts.
Sure.
As a board, we were asked to look at a rezoning amendment, a zone map amendment, right? Which, what we've heard very first thing is that it's consistent with our, our comp plan. So I see no issues there in approving or giving a favorable recommendation. The second thing we were asked to do is look at the special use permit. And, and as we just heard, when you look at the approval standards for which we're asked to evaluate special use permits, I, I don't see anything that would prevent us approving this based on the standards for which we, we pass these, these things through, these decisions through. Just sharing, just sharing the same.
I think that's a very valid observation. And also the fact that they're not asking for any underlying zoning variances is also a good mark in my mind, too. So unless there's any other comments, now would be a time for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. So, motion to approve the petition of Papos Express Incorporated for zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property from R1, single-family residential and East Estate to C, I'm sorry, and E Estate to C2 Community Commercial in the Village of Gurnee.
Second.
I think technically it's approval of a favorable recommendation. It's, it's approval of a favorable, but let's wrap the special use permit into. Well, they, they kinda had it as two. Oh, did they? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's too separate.
I'm sorry, okay.
And I'll add into the motion is a motion to, instead of approve the petition, is a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the Village of Gurnee Board.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Josh. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
And Sula.
Aye, motion carries. So next would be the matter of the special use.
I'll do that one again. Motion to approve the petition. I'm sorry, motion to afford a favorable recommendation of Papos Express Incorporated for a special use permit to allow the establishment and operation of a car wash on the subject property in substantial accordance with the plans provided to the Planning and Zoning Board on March 4th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, um, just because there was just one minor discrepancy, the stipulation that the fence is eight foot all around the site.
I'm gonna make the eight foot around the site as part of the motion.
And are you okay with the amendment?
A second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please, Joanne.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
And Sula.
Aye, motion carries. As you know, we recommend to the village board and they will make the final decision. And staff will let you know when the, the village board will be weighing in on the matter. But I like what I saw today, so good luck with your project and thanks for wanting to be part of the community. Okay. Next meeting on the calendar is scheduled for March 18th and I saw that we have notices for at least two public hearings, so...
Yeah, three, yeah.
Okay. At least two. Keep piling them on. Okay, um, any, I'm gonna open the floor to the public if there's anything that anyone would like to talk about that's not on the agenda. If not, I'll close the floor to the public, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. By, moved by Mr., a second by Mr. Paysek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.